...at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you've taken time this evening to join us. We're very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest and support of our students. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. We'll begin this evening, as we do all of our board meetings, with our pledges of allegiance to the American flag, Texas flag, and the moment of silence. We have students from our two middle schools with us today. And you're going to be stepping in for Jeff? Thank you, because I was wondering who was. Here to introduce our kids from College Station Middle School is Principal Oliver Hadnot. And pinching for Jeff Mann is Chuck Lenwinkle, introducing our students from A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School.
Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, school board, audience. Tonight, I bring you two outstanding persons, Sayuni Domencina and Tereya Majeni. And I'm Dr. Mann, the principal at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. He is ill and not able to make it tonight, so I'm sorry if this is uncomfortable for you guys. But we have two great students from A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School tonight, Elizabeth Breeden, who is the National Junior Honor Society President at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School, as well as Sutton Springer, who is the Student Council President. And according to Mr. Mann, these guys are great leaders on the campus, and they will continue to be great leaders when they go to the high school next year.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Dr. Yoken, we have one recognition, student recognition, this evening to bring before you. Many times in this room, we get to honor baseball champions, and volleyball champions, and football champions, and swimming champions, and I'm happy tonight to be able to honor a bowling champion. With us to honor our student bowling champion is Randy Daniel, teacher and coach in College Station ISD. Randy, if you'd come and introduce.
Thank you, guys, for letting us come, and I would like to introduce to you Mark Reinberg. Mark is a junior at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. He has been participating in special Olympics, and specifically our bowling and track and field programs for We Lost Town, fifth or sixth grade. Mark, just a few things about Mark. Mark is a great athlete. He works hard at everything he does. He never complains. And when you say, "Mark, why don't you try this?" Or, "Mark, why don't you try that?" Mark's like, "All right, let's try it." He does not get discouraged. Oftentimes, Mark will, especially in bowling, Mark will bowl two strikes in a row, which is called a double, and he'll say, "I'm going for the turkey," which is three in a row. And a lot of times, he won't get that turkey. He's like, "That's okay, we'll get it next time." So, very proud of Mark and his work ethic, how diligent he tries, and how much he enjoys sports. Like I said, he's coachable, he's a great teammate, he's always encouraging his fellow bowlers or track and fielders. He can high-five and say, "That's okay, we'll do it next time," or, "Wait, get that striker." He's just a good guy. Very proud of Mark and his other extracurriculars. He's a trainer at CONSOL for this sports team, so very proud of him. The reason we're here tonight is to recognize him for going to state in special Olympics. He competed at a very high level, as he does in most things, and he won first place, gold medal. He had a score of 696. When I went back and looked at results yesterday, he beat the second place finisher by five. So, he did really great. Then, when I went and looked through all the results from his age group, he was the highest. So, very proud of Mark, very proud of all that he's accomplished, working towards the next two, more years, everything that he will accomplish, and so we're very proud of him and like to recognize him tonight.
If you have time on Friday or on Saturday, Friday after school mostly, Saturday all day back College Station High School, we'll be having a track meet, cycling meet, and tennis competition. If you have time and are interested, please come out. You don't need to sign up, just come on out, find the registration table, and ask for your book out. People love to work with anybody and everybody. I think even the high schoolers will take as many high schools as we can get, middle school students, kids who are not need to be supervised by their parents. But we're happy to have everybody in the community. It's a great opportunity for us to show off College Station facilities, but also to show off what our ethic can do. There will be athletes from all over the area, Conroe, to Caldwell, to Kern, to Mangolia, so please come out, it's a lot of fun. Can't say a lot more about it, just have a great time. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Dr. Yoken, that concludes our recognitions.
As always, we're appreciative of all of the art students within our school district, and so I'd encourage you, if you're a visitor, to take time to look at the artwork. The artwork tonight was provided by Pebble Creek Elementary, Spring Creek Elementary, A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School, and College Station Middle School. So, we appreciate the effort of the students and their teachers. So, we'll move on to consent agenda. The items I have on consent are G, H3, J2, J3, J4, J5, J6, and J7. Is there anything anyone would like to pull off? Do I have a motion to approve?
I move approval of the consent agenda as you just said. There you go. I'll second-state it.
Great. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as stated, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries 7-0. So, we'll move on to board reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share with the group? I got it. Anybody else? Okay. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. As we get to mid, now late April and into May, a lot of stuff is going on. College Station ISD, I want to highlight just a few things that'll be coming up next. Next week, on Monday evening, the board will have the opportunity to gather together again for two hours for a management oversight workshop to talk about construction. I will be in this room from 4:00 to 6:00, and we look forward to Mr. Hall and the work he and Mr. Rousse will do, talk about many construction projects and how we provide oversight on the construction projects we have in this district. On Wednesday, we're very excited about the culminating experience for our Teacher Leadership Institute. We started that this year under the leadership of Kelly Kovacs and others in our Curriculum Instruction Department, to take teachers from campuses who could do other things and may want other types of leadership opportunities. They were recommended for participation in the Teacher Leadership Institute by their principals, and one of the caveats, one of the things they had to do was what we call an RTO, or Risk-Taking Opportunity. This is something where they work at a district level or a campus level to step outside of their comfort zone and provide some real and more broad-based leadership on their campus or in the district. And Wednesday, we get together and hear from all of the Teacher Leadership Institute participants as they report on their risk-taking opportunities. We're really excited to see all the great things that have been happening and get to hear how it went for all of them. We'll have board action here in just a few minutes on the Boundary Adjustment Committee work, but just coming up, we'll know that we'll start that work with Boundary Adjustment Committee on the 28th of this month, and hope to have that done by the 31st of May before summer gets in full gear. We do have, on next Wednesday, the 27th is the Hall of Fame Banquet for, I know Teresa's here, I forgot the number of students who have been identified as Hall of Fame recipients will be there at the Hilton. And then, coming up, two weeks after that, we will have the, excuse me, on the 18th, three weeks after that, we have the Education Foundation Scholarship Reception. There's Teresa. So, we've got a lot of stuff going on, not to mention the other meetings that we have. Do want to highlight for employees in the audience, those who are getting service awards or who may be retiring. We will have the employee recognition awards. They will be moving now to the 19th of May, that's a Thursday, Thursday, May 19th, over at Grace Bible Church, Southwood Campus. This will now no longer be in conjunction with the board meeting. Employees, you'll have the night to yourself, so we look forward to honoring you for your years of service, for our support, service, our auxiliary employee, and our Teachers of the Year, as well as those folks who are retiring. So, that, and then the week after that, we have three graduations. So, a lot happening here in late April and May in College Station ISD.
Thank you for that. We'll move on to E2, consider approval of the charter for the Boundary Adjustment Committee. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. As most people in the room know, the good citizens of College Station ISD, in November of 2015, passed a $135.9 million bond election for a number of projects, including the construction of three new campuses, our third intermediate school, our third middle school, and our 10th elementary school. With the construction of new intermediate, middle, and elementary campuses comes the need to readjust our school attendance boundaries. The board has been working through different timing options, and has determined that the work of the Boundary Adjustment Committee for fifth through eighth grade lines will take place during April and May of this year with the Boundary Adjustment Committee. The board also spent the last couple of weeks going through the community, having two community forums, and opening up a web, excuse me, an email on our website to take feedback regarding whether or not the board should consider adjusting our high school lines at the meeting last night on April the 18th. You guys did make a determination that the high school lines will be adjusted through this process as well, using the Boundary Adjustment Committee that will begin meeting next week. So, what you have before you on item E2 is a charter for an ad hoc committee by board policy. The, we do, the board does have the ability to call special community groups together to make recommendations on things like school boundary adjustment. So, our recommendation would be that for item E2, that the board approve the charter for the 2016 Boundary Adjustment Committee. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
School boundary adjustment or board?
School.
Who have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the Charter for the Boundary Adjustment Committee say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So, the motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to E3, consider approval of the Boundary Adjustment Committee members. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. The second piece of action tonight in regards to the Boundary Adjustment Committee process is to approve the list of committee members. Mr. Lenwinkle, how many are we still lacking?
One.
One. So, we've been going through the process of gathering folks to serve on this committee. A Boundary Adjustment Committee is a little different than many of the committees that we have. One of the most important things that we try to have is geographic representation on the committee, trying to have, make sure that people who are on the committee live in different places throughout College Station ISD. We took recommendations from board members, from campus principals, and have tried to craft a committee, and we have that before you, save we are still looking for one person from one particular area of town to make sure we have that covered.
That'll be 39th.
That will be the 39th member. So, the action we have before you in item E3 is we would recommend approval of the list of Boundary Adjustment Committee members as presented.
Is there a list?
It is attached.
It's not attached.
It's not linked.
Hit refresh.
Magic.
It's the circle thing. As you can see, we've been filling this to the very last minute, so.
Any discussion?
I want to ask the board, I guess, a question, and it's, and also state my preference or my thoughts, and it's about whether or not we should have board members sit in on this meeting. And I think we can have up to three and not run into a lot of the regulatory problems that a governing board can run into if they reach a majority of their group. So, I think it would be very helpful for both the, well, for all of the committee, the administration, and the board, if we have members from our group sit in on that, and they can help explain or voice things from the board perspective and things we have seen in our experience, but also be mindful of issues and one that we get back together as a board, report those things to the board, but also help the administration along the process as well. And I really do think it would be beneficial.
In a liaison capacity?
Yeah, I mean, it could be a non-voting situation. I'm okay with that, I just, I think having the presence there could be beneficial. And without having asked people if they're willing to do it, I'll put a couple of you guys on the spot, Mr. Nugent and Mr. Wesson, and, well, I think it's appropriate for the board president to be on as well. In part, it's geographic representation, I think, is important, as we look at it from a board standpoint as well. And I'd like to hear what the rest of you guys think.
I think that's a great idea, and I think it's good to have Dr. Yoken on there, as she's been through this before, and she might really be beneficial to the group, help them figure out some of those things that they're going to come across that she's experienced.
I think it's a great idea. Where are we legally? If there's three of us, and, Dr. Ely, I'm assuming you'll be there. Does that, does that put us in, I mean, with four of us? Okay, you don't count two or four?
No.
Okay, that's easy then. You count, but just not in that.
Cheryl couldn't walk in accidentally.
And if, you know, I don't know everybody's schedule, and if you can't make it, I'm okay with us, since it's a liaison capacity, having the board president authorized to fill a vacancy if needed, just.
I can make four of those six, including the beginning and the end, but I missed two in the middle.
I could be a pinch hitter, if that's what you want.
I'd be happy to.
I don't know that I would say I'd be happy to, but I would be willing to do it. I do think that it's important, as we go through this process, that it's clear to our community how cognizant the board is, that this is going to be difficult. And we want to be able to provide clarity when possible, because people are going to have questions, and as long as it's a liaison position, I'm okay with that. But I do think it's important that we realize that we're there to learn, not to guide, and part of the reason we put together these kinds of committees is to provide an opportunity for parents and to voice their, voice their position, and then we ultimately get to decide, you know, how we feel about that recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with that wholeheartedly. I mean, I think if we're going, we traditionally put people in a room for other types of committees, bond committees, other things like that. I'm more than willing to do it, but I think it should be ask questions and listen, enter questions if directly asked and listen roll, and that's it.
If I might, you will notice on the list, you do not see the superintendent's name or any of the other cabinet members' names. The entire cabinet won't be here, there'll be about four or five of us who will be in the room, sitting in the back, serving as resources during this process. So, three more board members would be, I could see working in much the same type of capacity.
That's fine. I know I can do at least four of the six, and I can try to rearrange some things to make those other two. If not, then Mr. Schaefer's volunteered to fill in if we feel that's needed.
Do we need a motion on that?
Well...
So, you guys are non-voting members, ex officio, serving as a resource, correct?
Right.
Sitting in the back, getting a feel for things.
So, I think that would just be a cosmetic, how we're doing it, where perhaps what we do need is a motion to approve the members as listed, realizing that there will be one additional person.
I move we approve the Boundary Adjustment Committee members as presented, with the caveat that there will likely be an additional person from a designated geographic area added when it becomes available.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the Boundary Adjustment Committee members as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So, the motion carries 7-0. We'll move on to F, Hearing of Citizens. Ms. Horn, do we have any cards? Thank you. We'll move on to item H, one consideration discussion and possible action related to the 2016-2017 district improvement plan. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. The district improvement plan is indeed that. It's a plan to improve the education that goes on in College Station ISD that we do annually. Mr. McIntyre leads a process that involves the Districtwide Educational Improvement Council to look over our student performance data and other significant metrics, look over that information, examine the different programs and things that we're doing to benefit the students of College Station ISD, and make an improvement plan to be enacted for the following school year. Mr. McIntyre is here before us tonight with a presentation on the Recommended 2016-17 District Improvement Plan. This work has already been through the DEIC, who approved that last Wednesday. And with the presentation on the 1617 District Improvement Plan is Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. April is typically when we come together and take a look at the district improvement plan, which really captures the things that we intend to work on for next year. Last year, you might recall, that the district improvement plan was reformatted and really revamped to a large extent, so that the format was easier to read, and probably most importantly, so that the goals really reflected those things that we're working on as a school district. For instance, in our first goal, it really talks about rigor and relevance and the coursework that we have for our students, along with supporting objectives and activities. After that, of course, goal number two really talks about our three Cs, our choice, customization, and creativity for our students. A few of the items that I wanted to highlight this evening, because quite honestly, there are very few changes recommended for this year's district improvement plan, because throughout the year last year, we went through and updated it as we went along. And so, as we headed into this school year, really, it just left us to go ahead and update the executive summary, which really describes, in general terms, the performance of our students across the state, excuse me, across the district, as compared to the state and other student groups. In our executive summary, we talk about and highlight some of the performance challenges we have with some of our economically disadvantaged students and our African-American students. With that, we, in goal number one, went ahead and highlighted one of our programs, which is Avid, and you might recall that it was just, I believe, last month, if I'm not mistaken, Marla Ramirez, one of our star students, addressed the school board with regard to Avid. But you'll notice that we put Avid slash culturally responsive teaching, because Avid is probably the best example of what is described as culturally responsive teaching. As we take a look at culturally responsive teaching, some of the things that I highlighted for DEIC in our presentation had to do with what are those four conditions, as described by ASCD, the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development? And really, those four conditions have a lot to do with establishing inclusion, and that is that as whenever we design our learning activities and design our learning environments in classrooms, we want to make sure that we build in opportunities for collaboration and cooperation, and certainly treating students equitably. A second condition is developing a positive attitude, and that really, probably more importantly, has to do with relating teaching and learning activities to student experience or previous knowledge. All of us come to the classroom, if you'll think about it, with different experiences and different knowledge base, and so it's important that in the learning process, we link the new learning to previous learning or existing knowledge, and making sure that we do that, one of the best ways is through cooperation and collaboration among our students. Sometimes, our students can explain concepts and activities to one another better than adults can do at times, and it's making sure that we provide opportunities for that and expectations for that in our classrooms. The other two conditions really have a lot to do with enhancing the meeting, the meaning, providing challenging learning experiences, and you'll notice, again, the word relevant address relevant, real-world issues, and engendering competence, and that means connecting the assessment process to the student's world, so that assessment and evaluation and understanding where I am as a student in the learning activity, as a student, I can judge that and sense that for myself, not always having to wait on a graded paper to come back and tell me how I'm doing in a learning activity. And so, really, you'll just notice that we put Avid and then slash culturally responsive teaching, because Avid is probably our best example, best-known example of that approach that engenders those four conditions. In the evaluation area, now, some of the highlights are a little bit difficult to read on the screen tonight, but you'll notice in our workshop, Molly Perry went through and highlighted some of the changes in our community-based accountability system, and some of these should look familiar. For instance, per... some of these should, should look familiar, for, for instance, percent of first graders that achieve adequate growth in reading. We just talked about that about an hour or two ago in, in our workshop session. So those changes that are made in the community-based accountability system are also reflected in our district improvement plan where appropriate. So we're starting to make those links between those two documents and those two approaches. And so, not only did we highlight that, but also fifth and grade, fifth, eighth, and EOC students receiving accelerated instruction, along with percentage of students meeting expectations on E-Star, Universal Screener, and Grade Four, and those kinds of things. Those are all the changes that we just saw in our community-based accountability system. Outside of that, the rest of the district improvement plan really looks a lot the same so far as, again, our three Cs in goal number two, providing a safe and supportive environment, which emphasizes strong, healthy relationships. Goal number four, which empowers our families and community to be full partners in students' educational success. And then our last goal, goal number five, which has to do with demonstrating accountability not only to our community, but to state and federal targets as well. Just as Dr. Ely noted, it was last week that DEIC met and unanimously approved the recommended 2016-17 district improvement plan for your consideration.
Thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions?
I, I have a comment. I'm on, yeah, I think, yeah, I just turned it on. I've been on the board, I guess, six years now, something like that, and I want to compliment you on how far this document has come in that period of time. I mean, I really like where you are with it and what you're doing, and I, now that it's probably taken me six years to get here, that's not a good sign about me, but how it ties in with what we try to do as a board, but also what we hear you trying to do as administrators and when the teachers come and tell us what they're doing, and then what I see my kids doing, it makes sense now, so, good job on that, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Can you entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the district improvement plan as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the 2016-2017 district improvement plan as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, seven zero. I will move to H2 and receive a report related to the School Health Advisory Council Shack. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. School districts in the state of Texas, by law, have to have a student health advisory committee to, among other things, oversee a coordinated school health program. When we say coordinated, it means it covers a lot of areas, including health services, health education, counseling and psychology, psychological services, nutrition, family and community involvement, so there's a number of areas that are involved in a coordinated school health program. One of the components of a shack is an annual report to the Board of Trustees. We have traditionally done that in April, and since it is April 2016. Mr. Reed is here with Karen Bethard, who is the chair of this year's Shack Committee, to do a presentation regarding the work of the Shack for this school year. It's Bethard, Mr. Reed.
So, thank you for the opportunity, Dr. Ely and Dr. Yoken and the board to present to you tonight. I'm Karen Bethard, I am the co-chair of the College Station ISD School Health Advisory Council, and it's an honor to present to you tonight the 2015-2016 annual report to the Board of Trustees. Before starting the report, I'd like to extend a few thank yous of appreciation, first of all, to my co-chair, Ms. Amanda Scott, who was unable to be here tonight, the Shack Committee, which is comprised of many parents, we have a wonderful group of parents, faculty and staff who work on our committee, and also, I'd like to thank Mr. Michael Wesson for serving on our committee this year as a board representative. And lastly, I would like to thank Mr. Reed and Ms. Diane Dom, who have provided continual support and guidance to this committee throughout the, the year. They have done an excellent job, and so we're very appreciative of their service to College Station ISD, as well as to our committee. So with this, as was mentioned by Dr. Ely, every independent school district is required by law to have a school health advisory council, and the majority of the members of this council must be parents who are not employed by the school district. And so annually, the committee is approved by the trustees, and all College Station ISD administrators are also invited to submit names to serve on the Shack. We are required to meet four times per year, and I'd like to inform you that we have actually met six times this year, and so we've exceeded the requirements, and I think during that time, we've done a lot of hard work, so I'm happy to share that with you tonight. So basically, a shack is a group of individuals that they're, we're representing the different segments of the school district, and we're providing advice to coordinate, on the coordinated health program and its impact on student health and learning. And so, in consideration of this, we look at the College Station Shack mission statement. Our action plan is to improve the health literacy by seeking to engage organizations, professionals, individuals, and families within our community. And so we want to look at the coordinated health school program and inform you of what that is. It's a systematic approach where we are focusing on promoting, practicing, and coordinating school health education and services for the benefit and well-being of our students in the College Station School District, and so we're seeking to provide and establish healthy behaviors that would last for a lifetime. And so please note, I was, was mentioned by Dr. Ely, that is a Texas law, that all Texas schools are required to implement a coordinated school health program in grades K through eight. And so, as was mentioned previously, this is a very comprehensive program that is established, and you can see the components that are included in that, with the nutrition services, health services, healthy, safe school environment, all the way around, and counseling and mental health services, which is one of the areas we'll be discussing further this evening. So the goal for our shack this year was to review the components of our coordinated school health plan, and to review and support, the support that's needed for the counseling and mental health services within each school, and this has been a topic of discussion amongst the board for several years, and so this year, we have decided to take it head-on, and we'll inform you more of that as we proceed. And so we wanted to look at research, to see what the research says about students and student performance, and so what we're finding is schools that earn the exemplary rating, where the students are performing better, are those where students have healthier levels of cardiovascular fitness, as performed by the Fitness grams assessment. Schools that are usually ranked lower and academically unacceptable have a forty percent, slightly more than forty percent of the students have the same cardiovascular fitness. And many studies show that fitness is associated with better health attendance with school, as well as reduction of disciplinary problems, and so that is certainly going to be reducing incidents involving drugs, alcohol, violence, and truancy. And then counties with high levels of cardiovascular fitness tended to have high passing rates on our standardized tests, and so we know nutrition and fitness is very good for our students, and so we want to keep that as a key factor as we're proceeding. And so, as far as our activity report, this is going to be a listing of some of the things that we've done this year, and, and I won't read through the whole aspect, I'll more highlight it for you so that you won't be bored, but you can understand what we've done. And when we started out the beginning of the year, we had a Texas A&amp;M professor to come meet with the board, and they shared with us a program that's successful at Texas A&amp;M called Tell Somebody. And this particular program deals with a variety of issues on campus, including mental health, and they demonstrated how this system has been successful at Texas A&amp;M. So the shack reviewed that, we looked at our charge for the year, we did some breakout work and, and sections, and talked about the different components of what the coordinated health school program looked like, and to assess how we have done in the past and what our plans were for the upcoming year. We had worked on a wellness plan last year, and so we need to do some touch-up on that, and so we reinforced that with this year. Within our subgroups, we talked about the aspect of the mental health concerns that have been a concern over the past several years, and we talked about that amongst our committee, and then we had the Brazos County Health Department to share some statistics with us related to mental health issues that are related to the region and state. This helped to bring this to light, is what a problem that it really is with our students, as well as other populations. And we recognize often that activities or behaviors go unreported until a tragedy occurs, and so our committee wanted to address this at each of the school campuses before experiencing a negative event or traval, traval, tragedy within the College Station schools. And so, if we know that mental health challenges are staggering, we know that these are facing our students as well, and so we felt like we could not ignore these facts. So we took on the aspect of discussing mental health and the mental health issues, and we were seeking to create a way where we could do some surveys of faculty. We also planned to present at the success team meeting, and we engaged with Ms. Chrissy Hester, who was already working on a program, the School Messenger, and she came and represented this program to us, the aspects of it, and we found that this program was certainly a tool that would be successful, and it was a great match for what our plan was, that was something that was established already within the College Station schools, so we found an avenue to which we could actually work. And so within this, we've considered that, and that will be included in our recommendations. We also made some recommendations for the wellness program, making sure that we were in regulatory compliance with the, the laws of the state of Texas. And of course, our recommendations that the shack presents support the aspect of success each life, each day, each hour, related to social and emotional support and physical support. And so once again, showing success being the, the center of the philosophy of the College Station ISD, looking at instructional support, the physical support, the social, emotional support, so all of this is key to the success of our students, and is the focus of the shack. So our recommendations to the Board of Trustees is to support the counseling and mental health initiative through the School Messenger program, to continue to evaluate the effectiveness of the staff wellness plan. With only a small number of our staff involved, we want to make sure that that's appropriate. Recommend through the School Messenger a system for reporting issues with mental health, the district assessing mental health concerns among our students, and then also revising the wellness plan on our district webpage. What is next for the shack, we will continue to review the College Station ISD Wellness Plan, that will be something that we will keep focused. We would like to initiate more communication with our PTO programs at each of the schools related to health and wellness, we feel like they're a good advocate to get these activities into schools, to continue to support the counselors related to physical and mental well-being of all our students. Our counselors have a great job, they spend a lot of time advising with, with student scheduling and things like that, we have some really counseling needs that, that need some help, and so we want to certainly support our counselors. And then to continue suicide training at the middle and secondary school. And so certainly, we have a group that has worked very hard this year, we're very pleased with the work that we have put forth, I think that this mental health approach that we'll be putting forth will be an excellent program for the College Station schools and our students, and so we appreciate your consideration of our recommendations.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I would just say, and I did not get to attend every single meeting for shack, but I, I was impressed with this group. This is my first year to be liaison, and you've got a lot of people in there who care a lot about this district as a whole. You know, when I first walked in the first time and heard that they were trying to tackle mental health issues, I'll be honest, I walked in that first time just kind of shaking my head going, you picked probably one of the most difficult topics that you could pick, I think, out of, out of everything, and I think there's a lot, a reason why a lot of school districts don't touch this, and, you know, I think the system they've come up with is a, a lot more complicated than they have the opportunity to present tonight in a quick presentation, although we do appreciate it being a, a quick presentation. There's a lot more to it, and, and it's incredibly complicated, but I think that they're in the process of setting up a system that they've been worried about for a long time, that a lot of things have just kind of finally come together to allow us to hopefully head off some problems before they occur in the district. Now, you know, I, I think the, this is one of those things that you don't know you need until after it happens, and I commend this group for hopping on this before we hit that point, and I think the hope is that through this system, we won't hit that tragedy. Ideally, we'll catch some of these things before they happen, and, because invariably, it's going to happen anywhere, so much kudos to you guys, an enormous amount of work, and a lot of people coming together on some complicated issues, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say thank you so much, Ms. Bethard, for you and your co-chairs' leadership in this, and Mr. Reed for your leadership. Buddy Reed's passionate about this, they may have to meet four times, they've met six, but they'd meet eight if it was up to Mr. Reed, because there's, he's very passionate about the work that's being done, and there are a number of tremendous volunteers who have, have their eye for the entire health for our students in College Station ISD, so thank you for your work in that area, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. So there's no action required, correct?
Just receive the report.
Receive the report, okay. We'll move on to I1, consider approval of the new administrator contract as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. When Mr. Martindale was tabbed to be the new deputy superintendent for business and operations, moving over from College Station High School, we had a very big hole to fill in the principalship as CSHS. We went through a process, this spring, we advertised this position all across the state of Texas, and obviously inside College Station ISD. We, we had some good participation, we had thirty-two applications of people who were interested in being CSHS principal. A committee looked over all those applications and determined that five folks should move forward for a first-round interview. We, the, the committee made up primarily of CSHS campus staff and a couple of central office administrators, interviewed those three, interviewed those five people, and three moved forward for a second-round interviews with me. Spent a lot of time with these folks, and we had some real, real quality people interested in becoming a part of CS, ISD, and a part of our family, or moving up within our system. My goal in this was to find the exact right person to lead this campus, to be the second principal for College Station High School. Kudos to Mr. Martindale and his administrative team and his teacher leaders on his campus for setting up a campus that has been very successful. But wanted to find the right person to take the, the strong foundation and move that even, even farther forward, and, and continue to push on areas that need to be pushed, pushed upon. I believe we found that person, and it is my honor and privilege to recommend to the College Station ISD Board of Trustees this evening to accept, to swiftly and enthusiastically accept my recommendation of Tiffany Parkinson, the current interim principal of College Station High School, to be the full-time principal of CSHS.
Thank you, Dr. Ely. Any comments or questions? Would somebody like to enthusiastically make?
Swiftly.
And swiftly?
And swiftly.
Well, if I have to ask, it's not so swift, but we can do in.
I would say that I would move that we accept the new administrator contact of Tiffany Parkinson as the new principal of College Station High School.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all those opposed, so the motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, board, I appreciate that. I would like to point out that Tiffany is in the room with us, with a very special guest, who do you have with you, Tiffany?
This is my husband, Josh.
Congratulations.
That may be the last time you see her, Josh, so. We'll move on to J1, approve ward of request for quote sixteen dash zero one five for computers to Avonex for the amount of $521,600 to be purchased from the 2013 and 2015 bond funds. $521,600 to be purchased from the 2013 and 2015 Bond Funds. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. As is according to board policy, for any expenditures above $50,000 must go to the board for approval. And what you see before you tonight is a request for the purchase of a little bit over $521,000 worth of computer equipment. You see that it is coming from both the 2013 and 2015 Bond Funds, because some of the projects that they are, those computers are going to, were authorized by 2013 or 2015. With more information regarding this purchase is Deputy Superintendent for Business and Operations, Mike Martindale. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. Recently, our technology department identified the need for additional computers at our new College Station High School, excuse me, College View High School. I'm still back on the principal recommendation. Apologize. For additional computers at the new College View High School, as well as the need to replace aging computers at other campuses throughout the district. In response to that, a request for Quote 16-015 was prepared and mailed to twelve vendors and advertised according to state law and polis, district policy. Seven vendors responded to this RFQ. These computers and monitors were quoted per the Department Information Resources. The DIR is an agency of the state of Texas and has established contracts with vendors for technology-related products and services. Their contracts have been competitively bid and meet the competitive bid requirements. The received quotes were evaluated and scored by staff members from CSISD Technology and Purchasing Departments. RFQ included an option for pre-imaging of desktop computers with the CSISD-provided image. The quote from Avanex for Hewlett-Packard desktop computers and monitors received the highest matrix score based on the criteria in the RFQ, and includes the pre-imaging option at no charge. With this information is the administration's recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the purchase, pre-imaging, and delivery of HP computers from Avanex for the amount of $521,600 to be paid from the 2013 and 15 Bond Funds.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting on this matter.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, well, no. Why is it so vague? I'm ready to buy computers. Go ahead. Okay.
I move that we approve the award of the request for Quote 16-015 for Computers from Avanex for the Amount of $521,600 to be purchased from 2013 and 2015 Bond Funds.
Thank you, Dr. Wesson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion as, as presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero with one abstention.
Thank you.
We'll move on to K-1. Consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price, the total budget, pardon me, I missed the phrase, total project budget authorization for the superintendent or his designee to execute necessary documents associated there with, and the authorization to proceed with the work associated with the deferred maintenance project for Pebble Creek, Southwood Valley, and South Knoll Elementarys from the 2013 Bond Funds. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. Earlier in the meeting, we talked about the 2015 bond that took place last semester. Part of that bond was money for deferred maintenance projects. With the, the GMP, total project budget, and authorization for your approval tonight is John Hall, Executive Director for Facilities, to talk about the projects at South Knoll Elementary, Southwood Valley Elementary, and Pebble Creek Elementary Schools. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. It's my pleasure to present the deferred maintenance project at Pebble Creek, Southwood Valley, and South Knoll Elementary Schools for your consideration and approval this evening. Back in November of 2015, the citizens of College Station passed a school bond in the amount of $135.9 million for new construction and renovation to district facilities. One of the ident, one of the items identified in this bond package was for some deferred maintenance projects at Pebble Creek, Southwood Valley, and South Knoll Elementary Schools. This agenda item is to approve the guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, and total project budget for the work on those three campuses. The scope of work includes some new painting, vinyl wall covering, and tile wainscoting over at Pebble Creek Elementary School. Over at Southwood Valley Elementary School, we're going to be upgrading some, some sink cabinets over there that are, that are not acceptable for accessibility ADA requirements, as well as some interior glazing replacements over there, where we've got some glass that kind of getting old and tired looking. And finally, over at South Knoll, we're going to be doing some, a little bit of asbestos abatement, and some window replacement and minor drywall and paint work associated with that. Our GMP was, was developed based on a request for competitive seal proposals, or RF CSP process, which was advertised to the public as required by statute. And our construction manager at risk, Pepper Lawson Construction, coordinated this effort on behalf of CSISD. Bid day for this project was March 31, 2016, at Pepper Lawson's office in Katy, Texas. And Theo Rouse and myself were present for the bid openings, as well as Melissa Fleming with VOK Architects. I'm glad to report that the bids came in within budget for this project, but, but that's all for this round. We, we didn't have any savings to report at this time, so we came in just, just barely within budget on this one. So in consultation with CSISD and VOK Architects, Pepper Lawson Construction has reviewed the final scope of work, reputation of the subcontractors, quality of materials specified, and other relevant factors, and arriving at the GMP for this project, which is now proposed for your approval in the amount of $1,439,095. A summary of the total proposed budget is also listed for your information. Along with our GMP, I have listed all of the additional costs to be picked up by the district for a total proposed project budget of $1,684,418. So it is recommended that the Board of Trustees of College Station Independent School District consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price of $1,439,095 from Pepper Lawson Construction, and the total project budget in the amount of $1,684,418 for the deferred maintenance project at Pebble Creek, Southwood Valley, and South Knoll Elementary Schools. It is further recommended that the superintendent or his designee be authorized to sign any necessary documents to implement the guaranteed maximum price, and that the Board of Trustees authorizes the commencement of work associated with this project. And with all that said, I'd love to answer any questions.
Thank you. And, and it's my understanding that all of this work can be done during the summer break so that it won't affect the school.
That's correct. It'll be finished all the summer before school starts. In fact, we had to do some juggling for summer programs to make sure that we had room to get into these campuses as well.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments?
I make the motion that we approve it as long as I don't have to read that whole entire thing. I approve. Make the motion, will you approve it? As Mr. Hall presented.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? So the motion carries seven zero. Thank you. The Board will meet in executive session to conduct a closed meeting to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property because the deliberation of an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the district in negotiations with the third party. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the deliberations regarding real property closed meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.0742 of the Texas Government Code. When we're done with that, we will come back into open session. The government students are not required to stay until we come back. I know you're thrilled. So thank you very much for attending and...
See you next month.
We'll see you next month. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting adjourned.